Good evening, everyone. It is seven o'clock. We will go ahead and call the meeting to order. Please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could I please have a motion to approve the agenda?
Someone.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes. Next up, could I please have a motion to approve Board of Education meeting minutes for October 19th, 2023?
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes. And before we get to our next item, the verification of unofficial election results, which Mary LaPac will come up for, I just got so excited about our student presentations this evening that I skipped right over our introduction. So I'm going to take a quick pause and read that, and then we'll hop over to Mary. Welcome to all of you to the Rockwood Board of Education meeting. We would like to thank the administrative team and all the staff and students at Lafayette High School for being gracious hosts for our meeting this evening. The purpose of this meeting is to conduct the business of the district, hear reports about our progress, and listen to the community on important issues. We want to remind all of our visitors that we expect the audience to remain civil and respectful at all times as the board conducts its business. Opinions expressed at the meeting are not necessarily the opinions of the Rockwood School District. We appreciate your cooperation and that you took the time to attend tonight's meeting. And now, we welcome Ms. LaPac up to share with us the news from the election.
Good evening.
Good evening.
On November 7th, voters in the Rockwood School District passed Proposition 3, the Zero Tax Rate Increase Levy Transfer. The results are still not official, but according to the St. Louis County and Jefferson County websites, overall, 9,076 Rockwood patrons voted in support of Prop. 3, or 66.3%, and 4,613 patrons were opposed, or 33.7%. Overall voter turnout across St. Louis County was 16.64%, and voter turnout in Jefferson County was just over 10%. Rockwood turnout in St. Louis County was a little less than the overall turnout at 15.88%, and Rockwood voter turnout in Jefferson County was a little higher than the overall county turnout at 13.73%. We want to thank everyone who took the time to come out on November 7th and vote, and thank you for everyone who helped get the word out.
Thank you, Mary. Anybody have any questions? All right. All right, here we go. Next up, we have our co-presentation, Community Service Student Presentations, and this is titled Part One. So, to be continued. There are a lot of names on here, so I'm going to welcome Dr. Dave Cobb and Dr. Gary Jansen up, and then it looks like Dr. Paul Godwin, Dr. Karen Hendrick, and Dr. Corey Sink. All the doctors, come on up.
So, good evening. We had the wonderful opportunity to have some individuals come up to talk about what they do really well in our schools and have students present some of the service learning that they do. When we offered the opportunity for principals to do this, we got an outstanding, "We want to be there and we want to do this." So I'm really excited to introduce Paul Godwin and his... Do we want to introduce everybody first? I guess. We have Paul Godwin from Green Pines, who's going to introduce the individuals here at this time. Come on up.
Good evening. I'm going to introduce Megan Jaeger and Kathy Backer. They are two of our current third-grade teachers, and I'm going to have the students introduce themselves because they practice that. So they're ready to go. And this is not my production, so I'm going to let them share all the great things that they've been doing for quite a bit of time.
Good evening. We're so excited to be here and share with you the work that are amazing. Green Pines' third graders have been doing for 31 years. Our third-grade service learning project has been the same since 1992. We are the stewards of this project for the past couple of years, but there have been lots of other teachers that have taken it on and come up with ideas to keep it going for hundreds of gators, these individuals included. We support the Salvation Army Family Haven Shelter on Page Avenue through our service learning project, and each year, our students raise between $2,000 and $3,000 through events throughout the year, which culminate at the end of the year in an amazing field trip that they get to go on. And like I said, this is not Paul's show. This is not our show. This is their show. So we'll get to the stars here.
So this project consists of three parts. Students raise funds for the shelter during a fall read-a-thon and a winter garage sale. And then in the spring, we take a field trip to Target on Manchester Road, who has partnered with us all these years. And there, the kids work in groups to shop from a wish list of items that the shelter needs. And then from there, we actually go to the shelter to deliver the goods that are purchased so that the kids can see who they are helping and hear from the staff at the shelter who talk about the impact that they're making. We received a letter from the director at the shelter that we wanted to read part of for everybody. Dear friends, this letter is to say that, first off, you rock. We at the Salvation Army Family Haven truly appreciate you thinking of our organization as we are experiencing an influx of families to service. Your generous charitable donations of pillows, blankets, toiletries, lotion, pampers, cleaning supplies, et cetera, will help to make the difference in many of our programs, program participants, in the programs for participants' lives. We pray that our partnership never ends because your dedicated hands and minds work great at picking out the most helpful things that our participants need, and we distribute them, as they say, teamwork makes the dream work. Again, we are truly happy you chose us. You could have chosen any organization, but you elected to help us with our mission. Please continue to help keep us in mind as we continue serving our families while doing the most good. May you and your families continue to be blessed in all you do. Best regards from Annie Rowe. She's the program director. And now we'd like to turn it over to the kids. Annabella.
Good evening, everyone. I am a former third grader at Green Pines Elementary School. My name's Annabella Graham, and I currently go to Rockwood Valley Middle School as an eighth grader. This service project has taught me the importance of giving back to our community and seeing how kindness can make a difference in what you do. Not only was this project fun, it was a learning experience for me to value as a young child the importance of generosity. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Liam Byrd. I go to Green Pines Elementary, and I'm currently in fourth grade right now. When my class worked on a service learning project, I learned a lot of valuable lessons. I learned that it's important to help other people meet their needs, and I really liked that we were able to do that. I also learned that you feel good inside when you're able to donate your resources. You help others, and you feel good about doing it. It's a win-win. This service learning project is something I will always remember, and in the future, I plan to give back as often as I can. I would encourage others to do the same. At my house, we have a sign on our wall that says, "When you have more than you need, build a longer table, not a higher fence." And I think that's what the service learning project is all about.
Hi, I'm Molly Griffith. I'm a former Green Pines Gator. The part I liked most about the service project was getting to bring everything to the homeless shelter and just feeling the appreciation. On top of that, it felt very rewarding. I would tell a stranger that the service project was really impactful because it made me understand what we really have and also how hard work pays off. I think the moral of the story is helping others in need in our community. Although nothing was too terribly difficult along the way, it was good to see how the garage sale work paid off so we could get the materials the homeless shelter needed.
Hi, my name is Kaylee Reed, and I like that we got to use our money that we worked and earned for. And we raised the money all year by doing different things at a read-a-thon, a garage sale, and many different things. We got to spend the money on, for people at a homeless shelter, and we got to pick up things they need from Target. It made me feel good because these people need these things more than we do. We should always try to help others and not complain about the things we have and we don't have. It made me feel more grateful for the things I have and that I do.
Hi, my name is Olivia, and I'm in fourth grade at Green Pines. I'm going to be talking about the service learning project. First, I'd like to say that it was a very fun experience and that I learned a lot, like giving up your wants for someone in need. I got to sell my wants to people who need it a lot more than I do so I could earn some money to go to Target and buy all this different stuff to donate to the shelter, like soap, towels, and bed sheets, and many more. The service learning project taught me that when you give up something to someone who needs it, you can end the day knowing you did something important.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you again for coming. My name is Lucy Cordes Palmer, and I'm an eighth grader at Wildwood Middle School, a former Green Pines Gator. In third grade, as you know, we went on a field trip to Target to collect items for a homeless shelter. I liked how all of us students had an opportunity to get together and accomplish something big, something bigger than ourselves back in third grade. I enjoyed this project because of the lasting impact it had on me. Whenever I know I have helped people, I just feel good about myself. And as a third grader, I wanted to continue helping people. This project inspired me to join the National Junior Honor Society and my middle school's kindness club. In the kindness club, I helped set up a care closet to offer items to students in need, very similar to the third-grade project. I feel like this third-grade field trip was my first exposure and my inspiration to help people.
Good evening. My name is Avery Townsend, and I'm a junior here at Lafayette High School, as well as being a former Green Pines student. Being involved in the third-grade service project where we shopped for basic need items and delivered them to the homeless shelter made me feel grateful for everything I had, my toys at the time, food, my family, and my home. It made me realize the fortune of having these essentials provided for me. That sense of gratitude fostered back then continues to stay with me even today, reminding me of the blessings that I tend to often overlook.
Good evening. My name is Brooklyn Gordon, and I'm currently a freshman here at Lafayette High School. In third grade, this service learning project inspired me to be more giving to the people that are less fortunate and don't have the supplies that I have. Throughout this project, we utilize subjects like math and reading to get the most of our money when buying supplies. Looking back on it now, I realized it was such a unique opportunity to both help others and learn something new in the process.
Hello. I am Morgan Lang, and I am a junior at Lafayette High School. I was involved in the third-grade garage sale in 2015, and I still remember most of it vividly. We had the opportunity to create a shop and decorate banners and set up our desk of things that we had at home that we were willing to sell to the younger kids, and that was super fun. And then, we took a trip to Target, and we were able to spend that money and buy stuff for people at a homeless shelter that were less fortunate than other children like me and other kids that maybe attended Green Pines. Being able to see the shelter was extremely eye-opening and helped me understand how the event was designed to help others. It also made me extremely grateful for my family and everything my family had given me. Not only did it affect me as a third grader, but through life. If a stranger approached me and were to ask about my experience during the garage sale, I would mention how fun the event was, and I would also mention the great learning experience it was. Seeing someone so grateful for a simple thing such as a pair of socks had a lasting and powerful effect on me. I'm grateful that I was a part of the experience and hope other children can be a part of the experience as well.
Just real quick, before I introduce Dr. Jansen up here, when I asked for examples for the service learning, what made me so proud about this particular one was how embedded this was. So not only was it at Green Pines and also at the middle school, but also everlasting through the high school. So to find students to come back from high school to present about their experience in third grade, and we actually have a staff member who I talked about this idea, and she remembers her kids going through it. So the idea of service learning, when it's impactful and sustainable like that, I think that that's when you hit a home run. So thank you, guys, for coming and doing this. Really appreciate it.
What's the significance of the globe?
This was given to us after 20 years of doing the service learning project.
That's amazing.
Well, it's good to see so much great work happening in third grade, and that continues to impact our students even as they get into middle school and high school. And I'm excited to introduce Dr. Hendrick, who's going to share about some of that service learning that has continued at Rockwood Valley.
Thank you, Dr. Jansen. Actually, I will not be sharing that, but I will pull up some experts. So joining me tonight, our sponsor, Kelly Roth, is our teacher sponsor of our National Junior Honor Society at Rockwood Valley. And then three of our outstanding students who are thriving members of the NJHS, Anya Jane, Sadie Hill, and Angus Ramsey, will talk to you about how their work not only impacts our under-the-roof school community at Rockwood Valley, they impact the greater Rockwood School District community as well. So come on up.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Anya Jen, and I'm a member of the Rockwood Valley National Junior Honor Society. Myself, Sadie Hill, and Angus Ramsey are here to tell you about just some of the service National Junior Honor Society does for Rockwood Valley and the community as a whole. Currently, the RVMS NJHS has a little over 80 members, consisting of seventh and eighth-grade students who are in excellent academic standing, demonstrate outstanding personal qualities, and all together want to make their school and community a better place. At least eight hours of community service is required by each member by the end of the school year. And already this early in the year, we have completed over 920 hours of community service. Some of these activities include things like helping out with scout troops, church groups, helping at the St. Louis Food Bank, sweet celebrations, and helping around our school with appreciation days for staff, as well as other various activities. Sadie Hill will now could tell you all a little bit more about some of the activities we have done to benefit RVMS. NJHS, as Anya stated, is in charge of appreciation days for all staff, and we promote and offer other activities to benefit RVMS as a whole and have all students get involved. Some examples of things we do for appreciation days have included baking treats for our custodial staff, greeting bus drivers in the morning with goodies for School Bus Safety Week, writing notes of thank you to our administrative assistants, and decorating our counselors' offices for Counselor Appreciation Week. Also this year, due to a custodial shortage, NJHS helps them each week by gathering the recyclables from the entire school. The staff is beyond appreciative. The recycling is still able to get done despite the shortage. Some other things we have done school-wide are assisting with wrapping presents for the Adopt a Family project, encouraging everyone to write notes of appreciation to hospital staff and nurses. We made and sent cards to sick children during the holiday season and had a Super Bowl Peanut Butter and Jelly Face Off. Students threw on peanut butter and jelly and placed it by the team they wanted to win the Super Bowl. Peanut butter and jelly are common items that food pantries want and need, and all items that were collected were donated to a local food bank. All in all, NJHS loves being able to put together activities that the whole school can get involved in, as well as showing appreciation to our staff. Angus Ramsey is going to give you some insight into ways our NJHS members help the community at large. Each year, every NJHS member is required to complete these eight hours of service, and many of our members choose to do their service work with organizations that benefit not just our school, but the entire community. Many students volunteer at places like the St. Louis County Library, the World Pediatric Center, Spencer, Kuma, and Special Olympics, just to name a few. NJHS also hosts projects for its members to help the community. In the past, we have made blankets for the Humane Society, made signs of encouragement for runners and races, and collected school supplies for schools in need. This year, NJHS had an opportunity to help the community with an organization that is so close to many of our members' hearts, including my own. The Walk to End Alzheimer's needed NJHS' help in constructing and gluing 1,000 wooden flowers for the walk in Chesterfield just a few weeks ago. Our flowers were used in various ways, but mainly at the end for all walkers to see a giant "End ALZ" sign in the grass. Students not only helped with the event, but they are able to also learn more about the disease and have conversations about the importance of helping the community and doing something bigger than ourselves and ourselves. The group of NJHS members at Rockwood Valley love to help whenever they can, and seeing our hard work come to life and watch how it benefits not just only our school and our community, but ourselves as well, is just the icing on the cake.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for them? All right. Thank you, Rockwood Valley. Appreciate it. And our service doesn't end at middle school either. Dr. Sink's going to come up and talk about the service that is happening, including one of the monumental tasks that they have going on currently.
Thank you, Dr. Jansen. Dr. Kane, President Bayes, Board of Education Directors, and Superintendent Cabinet Members, thank you for inviting us this evening. I am Dr. Corey Sink, proud principal of Eureka High School. I have the honor and pleasure tonight to introduce two of our student council members. If you've had a knock on your door in the last two weeks and a high-school-age person was standing outside asking for a can of green beans, it may have been one of our two students or one of our 1,700 students that were out doing many various community service projects, one of which, our canned food drive, our students are going to talk about tonight. So Anna Ames, Secretary of STUCO, and Hemeni Prieto, Treasurer of STUCO, are both here to talk about the various community service projects that take place at EHS.
Hello, everyone. So for our canned food drive, we are able to get a lot of cans for people as we have a competition between our fifth-hour classes so that more people will have incentive to bring in more cans so that they can win an ice cream party, or if they're grade wins between the different classes, they get a pizza party. And the chairs of the canned food drive, which we have had many wonderful chairs in the past, this year have provided incentives such as bagels, gift cards, and other things so that people can get more excited about bringing in cans. And the canned food drive lasts about two weeks, and many people, especially those on student council, gain cans through going through neighborhoods or waiting outside of stores. And also, those who bring in 250 cans or more get T-shirts to show off their school pride and the ability to bring in the amount of cans to help the community. And STUCO would show up at 7:45 in the morning to help out, to make sure that all the cans were counted and collected so that we could have a wonderful organized time trying to get them at the end.
We have been doing the canned food drive for 20, over 28 years, and since the course of those years, we have collected 826,490 cans, with two years bringing in around 50,000 cans. This year, we collected 27,071 cans, 3,000 short from our goal, but by far a lot better than last year. Some of the local food pantries that we donate to is the Eureka Food Pantry and Circle of Concern, who greatly appreciate all of what we give to them as well. We also do Powderpuff. Powderpuff is like the girls' version of football, well, flag football. And it's usually done during the week of homecoming. We've been doing this tradition for over 25 years, and there's usually anywhere between 60 to 100 girls on each team, so juniors and seniors. And around 25 to 60 guys on our Golden Guys, which is kind of like our boys' version of the dance team at Eureka. This is also a charity event. We usually charge $3 for admission, and all of the proceeds that we get from Powderpuff goes directly to student council's choice of charity. This year, we picked the Red Cross Maui Relief, and I don't know exactly how much money we raised, but we raised a lot of money. A lot. A lot of money. Yeah.
So another charity event that we have is the Mr. EHS Male Beauty Pageant. And different clubs around the school select one male to represent their club in different categories such as club wear, talent, formal, and karaoke. It's a very fun night. We have Miss Missouri being the emcee, and we have the audience vote for a fan favorite award. And also, the STUCO execs from past years are able to judge to figure out who the next Mr. EHS is. The theme for this year is the Oscars, and usually, we donate about $6,000 to a charity that we vote for. Last year's was for men's mental health, and this year's nominations are Ronald McDonald, Chad's, Purple Leash, Touch of Hope, and Healing Action, and even more than that. So we're going to vote for that soon, and yes, that is Mr. EHS. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. If you haven't seen the grocery stockpile in the lobby of Eureka, it's a sight to behold to see how many, what 30,000 cans really looks like. It is something else. Yeah, for it, for sure. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you all. That was fantastic. I got to see the cans this afternoon when I was over there, and I made the comment that you're so lucky to have that space now to put that in, and you don't have kids missing their lunch because it's crouching into their space, which is funny. Awesome job, everybody. That was really a great co-presentation. Thank you for bringing that topic to us. All right. Next up, we have Superintendent and Board Comments, Dr. Kane.
Before our students leave, let's give them another round of applause. They're amazingly involved. It is a can for it. There's absolutely no question about that. But to see literally elementary-age students all the way up to high-school students, it just speaks to what we were able to do in this school district. We should be very, very proud. And proud of their understanding of the importance of community service and what it ultimately means to our district. So thank you all for everything that you are doing. Earlier this evening, the Board of Education approved the hiring of Sarah Goodman as the new Associate Principal at Eureka High School. This will be effective July 1, 2024. She will be replacing Jennifer Strausser, who is retiring at the end of the school year. Sarah currently serves as a Sister Principal at Rockwood Summit High School, a position she has held since 2021. Prior to that, she was an English teacher at Eureka High School for 12 years, where she began her teaching career. She has participated in the Ignite Rockwood Program for Aspiring Administrators in 2018 through 2019, and she is a member of the Missouri Leadership Development System. She earned both a Bachelor's of Arts in English and Secondary Education and a Master's of Science in Educational Administration from Lindenwood University. She is currently working on her Doctorate in Educational Leadership from the University of Missouri-Columbia. Please join me in congratulating Sarah on her new role in the Rockwood School District. Veterans Day was on Saturday, November 11th, and over the past week, literally as early as Monday of last week, schools across the Rockwood School District showed their appreciation for veterans, service members, and first responders in the community with meals, assemblies, performances, parades, and so much more. We even had a very special surprise reunion for a student and his grandfather at Blevins Elementary School's celebration. At Eureka High School, students and staff members At Eureka High School, students and staff members installed 95 American flags on campus and raised $975 for the disabled American veterans as a part of the nonprofit's Field of Flags Service Learning Program. Each donated flag represents a special veteran in someone's life, with proceeds helping the DAV provide free, life-changing services for veterans in need and for their families as well. I was honored to be on hand for a number of the Veterans Day celebrations in our schools and met some of these very, very, very brave men and women in our community. Thank you, veterans. Thanks to each of you for everything that you have done and you continue to do for our country. I think they most definitely deserve a round of applause. Each year, Rockwood recognizes its support staff members who demonstrate outstanding service to the district through the Cornerstone Awards Program. This year, we received 112 Cornerstone nominations for 90 different support staff members. This week, 10 recipients will be announced, and they will be formally honored at the Rose Awards in May. Congratulations to our Cornerstone Awards nominees, and thank you for your service to our students, our staff members, and the entire Rockwood community. Congratulations to them as well. The Rockwood South Middle School Eighth Grade Concert Band has been chosen to perform at the 2024 Missouri Music Educators Association In-Service Workshop and Conference, which will be held on January 22 through the 27 in Osage Beach. This group is one of 26 from around the state scheduled to perform at the MMEA Conference, and one of only 10 bands, one of only four middle school musical groups, and the only middle school band. Congratulations to these students and their directors, and thank you for being an excellent representative for the quality fine arts programs that we have here in the Rockwood School District. One more round of applause. And finally, tonight, I want to extend my gratitude to the voters of the Rockwood School District for your help in passing Proposition 3, as Mrs. LaPax shared earlier, with the 66.3% of voters supporting the measure. We are now positioned to address annual safety, technology, and facility needs across the district, and help ensure that all students continue to achieve at the highest levels as we move our great district forward. Now, the work begins. So there are really three faces I want to briefly touch upon as we talk about that notion of work. The first is, there's a tremendous amount to do, and it is going to take some time. So as we've, you've probably heard a couple of times, maybe read in some way, shape, or form, 36 cents will be coming from that service to Capitol Projects in the tax year 2024, and then 18 cents in the subsequent year, which will be the tax year of 2025. We're also looking to restart a committee that actually began with the last Comprehensive School Improvement Plan. That was our Infrastructure Advisory Committee. There's a good chance it will take a new name, but that notion of having a committee take a real look at what we're doing and how we're going about doing it is something that we're most definitely going to be restarting here in the Rockwood School District. And last, but certainly not least, is this notion of transparency. It's not a notion. There have been a number of questions of what's going to happen, where is it going to happen, and when it's going to happen. I can promise you, we are going to find a measure, a vehicle, a way to make sure that our community, our entire community, has an understanding of what is happening and where it's happening. We're already looking at different vehicles to make that happen. That will absolutely be a part of what we're doing as we move forward as a result of Proposition 3. But for now, here is a token of our appreciation.
Thanks, Rockwood Brothers.
Thanks, Rockwood Brothers.
Thank you, Rockwood Voters.
Thanks, Rockwood Voters.
Thank you, Rockwood Voters.
Thanks, Rockwood Voters.
Thanks, Rockwood Voters.
Thank you, Rockwood Voters.
The results have come in, and Prop 3 has in fact passed. So congratulations to the entirety of the community. Congratulations and a special thanks to our voters. Now, the work begins. We talked about safety, technology, and we talked about maintenance needs in the school district, and now the work and the plan absolutely moves forward. So again, congratulations and thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kane, and most definitely, on behalf of this Board of Education, we would also like to say thank you. We truly appreciate the amount of work that went on to educate and share information that was factual about the district and its plans, and so we really appreciate the work that went on behind the scenes and up front, and certainly to all of the voters who came out in support. So thank you for that message. Thank you, Mary, and everyone else who has worked so hard to get us to this point. Any other Board comments?
Oh, I want to comment. I had the opportunity today to attend one of the DEAS puppet shows at Callison Elementary. Go Callison Tigers, my home school, and it was amazing. They have done such a wonderful job presenting with the puppets on very appropriate topics of kindness and getting along with each other and friendship, all through puppets, and they've written the scripts themselves. It was just a delight, and the kids just responded so well to it. So thank you, Dr. Suggs, and all of your department for putting those on.
I heard you were even a guest puppeteer today.
Yes, yes.
She was great.
She was Officer Ty.
Yeah. They talked also about self-control, and that was really amazing to watch. You know, we talk a lot about the whole child and how we integrate those pieces, and so it was a very creative way to have that conversation. And so next time a child is upset or needing to have a conversation with a friend, you know, they can go back and think about that puppet, and it's like, it gave them practical things to use, like counting to 10 and stopping to think before we act, and it was amazing. It's like, you know, we have to figure out how to meet them where they are, and I think that was a wonderful way to do that.
November, it was really busy for us on the board, so I just want to mention a few things that I had the opportunity to attend Saturday night. I was able to go to Legally Blonde at Eureka High School, and the students were absolutely fabulous, and the quality of their production was amazing. But what's even more amazing is they whipped this together in about two months' time, and it's better than most professional performances. So kudos to Eureka High School, but as well as, I know there's many other theater groups that have already done their fall musicals, so that's one. Second of all, the schools, the Veterans Day assemblies, thank you for inviting us and allowing us to be a part of those special days. Very, very well done. The singing, the kind words, it was just really heartwarming. And finally, there were four of us on the board that got to go to the MSBA conference with a few of the cabinet members, and we have lots of takeaways, which we're going to talk about at our work session, but the one takeaway that really touched me, and I texted Dr. Kane, was I was meeting with another colleague or another board member from a Kansas City school district, and she said, "We aspire to be like Rockwood." So that's just, you know, it just shows what great work we do in our district with the staff, with our parents, but also, we truly are a leader in our state, and everyone, you know, looks up to what we're doing, and so it was, I just wanted to share that we're doing good, and people look up to us.
You know, I'd like to just add on to some of the earlier comments made. You know, and Dr. Kane, when you were doing the presentations to inform the community about Proposition 3, one of the things you talked about is the value of Rockwood and the overall value that the taxpayers are getting for the bang for their buck. You know, education is a lot more than just reading, writing, and arithmetic. And as our presentation showed earlier today, teaching social responsibility is a fantastic goal of this district, and I would just like to applaud the people who were involved in keeping that effort, first starting it 30 years ago, and in keeping it going for 30 years, because that is part, I think, of what our value as a community is. It's not just that we are sending kids out of our schools who can do reading, writing, and arithmetic, it's also that we're sending out responsible young adults, and this is part of that Rockwood value that Director Barker just mentioned, and I think it is part of that overall thing that makes this school district so special. And the only other comment I would like to make is, if we can use any of those people who said "thank you" on a future campaign, I think that would be fantastic, because I think after that, my heart melted.
Any other Board comments?
Just going to cycle back to Prop 3, and I just want to say thank you to our community for listening, learning, and supporting. And I think those three words can describe it very well, what our community did, and the results were fantastic, so thank you all.
All right. Moving on to our agenda items, could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items as submitted?
Motion.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
I'd like to ask a question about Item 7.03 on the budget adjustments. As I looked at that, there looks to be several million dollars of funds shifting back and forth, and I know that this is just an interim update and may also be overcome by events of last week with the proposition, but could we get a little more background on those changes?
Is this on? So you know that our budget development and budget management process is a year-round process, and we have a few checkpoints in that process. One of those checkpoints is that every November, we bring to the Board this budget amendment, or one like it, where we have adjusted current year revenue based on new information. So we're past our September enrollment numbers, we have a better idea, we've set our tax rate for the year, and so we'll adjust all those revenue lines based on the new information. Then the second piece, the expenditure side of this, is that at the end of any fiscal year, there are certain projects and, you know, maybe some supplies that were ordered that because of shipping delays or because of work delays for contractors, they didn't get completed and paid for in the last fiscal year. So those are rolled forward into the new fiscal year. They've already been approved, purchase orders, all that has been done. They're just rolled forward through this budget amendment to allow for the funding of them. So this budget amendment, standing by itself, really doesn't tell much about our, about what the results of this fiscal year are going to be at all. It gives you a little more information on the revenue side, but we will be coming to you in December with our preliminary budget estimates, our first pass at the budget, to start leading you through that budget development process, and you'll be able to get a better idea there at that meeting, also how we expect to end this fiscal year.
Maybe just a further question, if I could. Given the passage of Proposition 3, do we expect to spend any of those funds in this fiscal year?
We do not expect to spend any of those in this fiscal year.
Okay. Thank you.
So the motion is to approve the consent agenda items as submitted. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? That passes. Next, I'd like to invite Deli, just combining it all together, Dr. Kelly Solberger. Could I please have a motion to postpone the approval of the proposed 2025-26 school calendar and revision of the 2024-25 school calendar until the December 7, 2023 Board of Education meeting?
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Good evening.
Good evening. I was going to see if that clicker is going to work for me, though. Here we go. All right. Good evening. I'm Kelly Solberger. I'm the Director of Human Resources and the facilitator of the District Calendar Committee. Our District Calendar Committee is comprised of parents, staff members, and administrators, and we meet together annually to develop a school year calendar for two years in advance. I hope to provide some insight tonight into the process behind the proposed calendar and to present a draft of the 25-26 calendar for the review of the Board of Education in this first reading. So as far as the work of the Calendar Committee goes, it's highly structured. We start off by having the committee members view a presentation to go over all of the parameters, and some even call those parameters constraints as far as the calendar creation goes. From there, we proposed a draft, and we allowed the committee members to review it and provide any input that they might have on the strengths, the opportunities for improvement, and then also questions that they might have. After that, we collected feedback from the group and came together for an in-person meeting and came to consensus on what the draft of the calendar will actually look like, and that's what we're going to go over tonight. But in order to best understand the way the calendar is put together, it's important to understand those parameters or constraints that I mentioned earlier. So first and foremost, we have a revised state statute that says that we can begin school no earlier than 14 days before the first Monday in September. This really pushes back when we can start school, and it does, you know, give us a constraint. We also have paired with that that our community values being out prior to the Memorial Day holidays, so we've just closed up that window a little bit as far as instructional days go for our student. In Rockwood, we also have the students attend 176 days. That is more than some districts in the St. Louis County area, but it's also less than some districts. I did a quick comparison today. Hazelwood School District, for example, their students attend 180 days. Parkway was also 176 days. For the most recent comp study, Ledeau was 175, so you can see that we're all kind of really close together as far as that 176 attendance days goes. In addition to that, the state requires that we have our students attend 1,044 instructional hours. It's important to understand that those hours are actual instructional time, so we can't include things like recess that is chaperoned by non-certified teachers. We can't include things like passing periods, so it's true instructional time, and because of that, we do need to build ourselves a little bit of a buffer for those instructional hours and things like inclement weather days. All of that impacts those hours, so when we're talking about the number of days that we want our students to attend and those instructional hours, we do want to have a little bit of a buffer in there. We also factor in anything like a presidential election, which is not going to be an issue in the 25-26 calendar, and then teacher contract days. Our teachers are on a contract for 190 days, so it's 176 days, and in addition to that, they have their conference compensation days, they have paid holidays, and teacher work days and professional learning days. That all comprises that 190 days that they're contracted to work. So when you put all those parameters or constraints together, you can see that we're pretty tight, and there's not a lot of room for flexibility. But we do think that the Calendar Committee really came together nicely and met these constraints, and we think put together best-case scenario draft for your review in this first reading. So next, I want to share kind of some of the salient points from our 25-26 calendar draft. You'll notice that there are, the blue days on there are two flexible professional development days. Those days are set by the Professional Development Committee. That's not something that the Calendar Committee chooses, but there will be two flexible learning days in the summer. The first day of student attendance is August 18. That is the first available day that our students can start, two weeks, 14 days prior to that first Monday in September. One thing that's great is if you look at October, you'll notice that the conference compensation day is on October 31, which is a wonderful day for our students to have a day off of school for the conference compensation day. You'll also notice, if you jump ahead to December, you'll see that December 19 is that teacher flexible work day that ends the semester, so we're ending the semester prior to going on winter break, which is great for kids to be able to take their finals, wrap up any courses that they have going on. It's good for teachers, too. So we're really excited about that, and they have a nice two-week winter break, which is awesome. So you'll see in January, when we come back, the teachers will come back on January 2, and students will come back on that January 3 date, so a really long, wonderful winter break for our families. You'll also notice that there's a full week for spring break, the third week in March, which is historically when the St. Louis County schools have spring breaks, so we have a full week of spring break there. There's also a spring holiday in April that we have a day off of school, and then one of the community requests to finish up school prior to Memorial Day. We do in fact finish up prior to Memorial Day. So a lot of strengths in this calendar, even with some of the constraints that we have in place, but we think it's a strong calendar for your consideration. One other thing that I do want to bring your attention to is, in response to some feedback- One other thing that I do want to bring your attention to is, in response to some feedback that we received, and our commitment to just continuously evaluating what we're doing and making sure that we're doing what's best for our students, we are going to revise the 24-25 calendar to more closely mirror what we're recommending for the 25-26 calendar, and that is ending the first semester at winter break. That wasn't the case before, so on the original adopted calendar, it was the students would come back for a couple days and take their finals, and we don't think that's what's best for our students. We think it's best for them to in fact take their finals, leave for winter break, and then come back to second semester on January 2nd. So we're also going to do that. So in conclusion, Calendar Committee was faced with some tight parameters, but they were up for that design challenge. I just want to thank our committee members and parents, staff and administrators who contributed to the calendar development. You know, it's not an easy task or process to craft this calendar, but we really think that this calendar supports the growth and success of our students in the best way possible. Does anybody have any questions that I can answer?
I have, I have a couple.
Yeah.
So on the summer staff PD days, did we survey the staff on summer PD days, or are we giving it another year? Do you have any feedback on that, or is that more of a PD question?
It is a PDC question, because they are the ones that decide where those PD days will go. Dr. Willett, do you have anything that you want to share about that?
I know we surveyed them. I believe...
I believe that we did have a majority of teachers that said that they were fine with the summer PD days.
Okay. Great. Thank you. And then also, I'm just noticing on here, for high school, there's late start days. Can you explain the rationale to someone that's just looking at this, why high school has late start days and not middle and elementary school?
I believe the high school late start days are when our teachers have their PLC committees, whereas the middle school has PLC time built into the day. It rotates with their team meetings, and their PLC is like their department or their job alike, so the high school needs that time to be able to meet, and the only way to make that work with a more complex schedule that the high schools have is to dedicate some time at the beginning of the day, so that ensures that they have that PLC time.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I don't know whether this would be the Calendar Committee or another venue, but I know when we published the last calendar, we seemed to have gotten a little bit of emails about graduation. So based upon this calendar, when would graduation ceremonies be?
I don't know the date for the graduation ceremony for 25-26. We don't have that date yet.
And not a Calendar Committee decision.
Would not, would not be a Calendar Committee decision either, but I don't, I don't know that.
Yep.
Sorry, I couldn't answer that.
I will say those dates typically are corresponding dates, so once you've locked in, you typically just have the dates that correspond year after year after year.
Any other questions that we can answer?
Typically, they're corresponding dates. Recurring.
Any other questions? All right, so that motion is to postpone the approval of the proposed 2025-26 school calendar and revision of the 24-25 school calendar until the December 7, 2023 Board of Education meeting. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes. Thank you very much. All right. Next, could I have a motion to postpone the approval of the proposed 2025-26 Rockwood Early Childhood Preschool Calendar and the revised 2024-25 Rockwood Early Childhood Preschool Calendar until the December 7, 2023 Board of Education meeting?
Motion.
Motion and a second. Dr. David Herrod is coming up to talk us through this one.
Good evening. I am proposing a draft of the 25-26 preschool calendar. And just by way of reminder, in previous years, we had separate half-day and full-day calendars, but last year, we were able to merge them into a single calendar, which now seamlessly aligns to our K-12 calendar. So let me know if you have any questions.
I think that's very simple and forward.
Thank you. No questions. Okay. I'm going to read this motion again. This motion is to postpone the approval of the proposed 2025-26 Rockwood Early Childhood Preschool Calendar and the revised 2024-2025 Rockwood Early Childhood Preschool Calendar until the December 7, 2023 Board of Education meeting. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes. Thank you, Dr. Herrod. All right. Last presentation this evening is a Rockwood Summer Academy Report for 2024, which is knocking on our door. This is information only, and looks like we have Dr. Dave Cobb, Dr. Shelley Willett, Dr. Kerry Jansen, and Angie Schott coming up to talk us through this.
Well, good evening, and thank you for allowing us the opportunity to talk about Summer Academy. I always say this every year, that it's, it's great to talk about summer in November, right? And so that's what makes me very excited. Summer Academy is something that we work really hard on in Rockwood, and that's one of the reasons why we bring it to you in November. There's a ton of planning that goes involved, so I just want to share with you a little bit about last summer and then what's coming up this summer. So last summer, one of the highlights that we had here, again, four elementary school sites. What you'll, if you can remember back in 2023, so last summer, we were, we had a conflict where we struggled getting out before the holiday of July 4th, and so our dates were June 9th to July 7th, and you'll see later on in this presentation that we were able to correct that, to have for an earlier exit time for our Summer Academy. We have four elementary school sites, Baldwin, Chesterfield, Gaggy, and Callison, two middle school sites, and then in tradition, we always have two high school sites as well. The Rockwood Summit site is always, was held at Rockwood South Middle School. In addition to our summer school sites, one thing that is, that not many people realize that it's also very complex, that we offer community education to, within all of our sites, so that's a really hopping place. Plus Adventure Club is not only on our summer school sites, but in addition to that, we have other elementary school sites, and then our early childhood offer, also offers programming as well. Some important facts to remember from 2023, just kind of highlights here. We had about 1,700 or 1,800 students that attended in-person learning for Summer Academy. About 1,600 of those students took part in virtual learning courses. Transportation for students to attend summer school, that was put in several years ago and has been a tremendous help and success to our families and our kids, so we're very proud of the work that our transportation department has done to help provide that support for our families. The other thing that happened that was excellent is we were able to get all students entered into Infinite Campus by creating one system, and so that is helpful really from a student safety standpoint, because when you have community education, you have Adventure Club, you have summer school, students all coming into one building, you really need to know who's there, and anytime a student needs to be sent home for whatever reason due to illness, we need to be able to look into one system and find that student, and we were able to accomplish that last year, which was a, which was a big task for us, something that we've always desired to do. It really helps for that student safety standpoint. Elementary students attended the full day this time. If you remember in the past, those of you who remember, we would have two half-days for Summer Academy at the elementary, you would have an ELA and a math portion, and we had kids coming and going throughout the day. Well, last year, we transitioned to have, we eliminated that, and we just had one session, and that was tremendously successful, so we're looking to do that again. The other good news is for last summer is we were fully staffed for our teachers, which was another excellent opportunity for us. If you remember, right out of COVID, you know, that was very hard on our staff, and our staff worked so hard during the year to come and commit to summer school, is a big ask for our staff, and we certainly try to make it welcoming, but we understand that, you know, to have a week off and then commit right again to 19 days for some of our highest learners, that's a full commitment, so we were very blessed to have some great teachers that were, that were applying for these positions. One thing I want to do a little bit different this time around was, instead of presenting all about summer school, I really wanted to bring Angie Schott up here, but she's one of the many people that make summer school so successful, and I feel like that she deserves the time to really brag about the things that she helps to put in place, so I'm going to have her talk a little bit about what to look for for the summers.
So I do get excited when it's time to talk about summer. I might be the only person at this time of year, but I am excited about the summer school program and what it brings for our student, or what it provides for our students, and what it provides for the teachers who get to teach, and I can share a little bit more about that later. But looking forward to this summer, we have selected our four elementary sites, Stanton, Eureka Elementary, Babler, and Werther, and then again, two middle school sites, Selvage and Rockwood Summit. Yep, Rockwood Summit is not a middle school, but the middle schoolers will attend their middle school site at Rockwood Summit, and then Marquette High School and Rockwood Summit High School will host our high school students. And like Dave said, we were able to get the calendar to end before the July 4th holiday, which is not just big for students and families, but also for that fully staffed piece that we were talking about. If we cannot go over that 4th of July holiday, we stand a better chance of getting our teachers to come and hang out with us, so. We will not have school on the 19th. One of the things, when we switched from the two sessions with a break in between, when we dropped that break, it allowed us to take back those 15 minutes and use them as instructional time and give us the opportunity to honor Juneteenth without adding a day to the summer school calendar. So that's where we found that, that day. So we will again be off on June 19th to honor Juneteenth without adding a day to the calendar, and still, we will have a week off between the end of the school year and when summer school starts, which we tried that ending and starting on the next day once, and there was a lot of gray hair. It allows for a lot of our systems to transition, Infinite Campus, transportation, all of those things, but it also allows for us to properly prepare the teachers for teaching in the summer, which they appreciate a chance to sit down with our coordinators and learn about what they're going to be doing. And then we will again provide transportation, and as far as elementary students go, because it is recommendation-based and not a credit recovery type of setup, our teachers will start making those recommendations in late February, and then invitations will go out to parents probably mid to late March. And then we will again have the fee-based programming through Community Ed at multiple sites. Adventure Club will offer their support at five locations. Again, in early childhood, we'll also be offering summer programming. And then Summer Academy is funded by student attendance, and so we're proud of the fact that we have great attendance at Summer Academy. Our elementary had almost 86% attendance, which is up from where it was in previous years a little bit. Middle school, right about that same, at 83%, and then high school at 95 and a half, and with that credit recovery in there, you see that higher percentage, so that's where that comes from. That's you.
And I would say just a quick note on the attendance. Having done summer school for a number of years, we've always strived at that 80% mark, so see something higher than that is, I think, it really speaks volumes to our teaching staff and the quality of programming that we offer, because summer is, it's a tough time to make sure you have regular attendance, so we really owe a debt of gratitude to our staff that make it such a welcoming environment for our kids. Just a real quick, another financial piece to this. We do, with the market research, we include those incremental salaries for our Summer Academy staffing. We will start the hiring process here very shortly to make sure that, number one, our administrators are hired, but then also that we get those staff in place, so then we can start that planning here coming up in late winter and early spring. And again, once again, we will use our financial piece to also provide transportation for our students. So a little bit about secondary, middle school and high school. Dr. Jansen, Dr. Willett can talk a little bit about what that looks like from a secondary standpoint.
All right. I'm going to talk a little bit about the academic programs that we have going on at the secondary. There are really three things going on. At middle school, we have intervention-based services, so we have a math intervention and an English Language Arts intervention, both in our Math 180 and our Read 180 programs. At high school, we have credit recovery classes going on for students who need to recover credit that they missed during the school year, and then we also offer four first-time credit courses, and those are courses that some of our students really appreciate being able to take during the summer so that they can engage in other coursework during the school year. So we offer health and personal finance online, those are both two required courses for graduation. We offer personal fitness and wellness, which is the first half of the PE credit that is required for graduation, that is in-person, and then we offer art fundamentals in-person, that is the gateway course to be able to take any of the studio art classes, so some kids like to get that out of the way so that they can engage in those studio art classes. And this summer, for the professional learning for our Summer Academy staff, we're going to require all staff to attend training on May 29th. The Learning and Support Services Team, meaning the curriculum coordinators, PD coordinator, and our coaches will plan and lead that professional development for our teachers. The focus will be on consistency in the instructional model and making sure that all of our kids are engaged in summer learning and working on how to engage kids during the summer. It's a little more challenging sometimes during the summer than it is during the regular school year, so we want to have some strategy behind that. And then our staff will also have the opportunity to collaborate with other people who have the same roles as them on May 31st to engage in the PLC process and prepare for Summer Academy before those kids arrive the next Monday. We have to keep in mind that, especially at the high school level, we are condensing 18 weeks or 16 weeks of instruction into four for these classes, so the more that teachers can collaborate together and be on the same page, it's really helpful for them to be able to do that. Any questions?
On the Adventure Club, I'm sorry. On the Adventure Club, is that only offered for students enrolled in Summer Academy, or is that open to everyone in our district?
It's open to everyone, so...
And are we, are we filled for Adventure Club?
Well, I don't, my guess to that answer would be yes, because typically, when I have conversations about Adventure Club, I'm talking about waiting lists, and so my guess is that it's pretty full. I do know that Adventure Club and Community Ed take a bulk of space in a lot of our schools, and so it's an opportunity for our parents, they really take advantage of that opportunity, so I do know that it's a very popular, let me answer it that way.
Okay.
So my question is, Dr. Willett, and Dr. Cobb, centered around the data collection from last summer. Do we collect data on the summer school students in terms of achievement?
So we do collect the data. So last summer, if you remember, we, was the first summer we split between the A and the B, and we just had full A and full B. So in talking with Glenn about that, we really want to dive deep into that data to get really good data points, because what we're seeing is, we know that we are seeing less of that summer slide that we typically see, but we really need to dive into the data to talk about what is going to be our best use of instruction and materials to see how can we get the most gain rather than stop the slide, if that makes sense.
Absolutely. In years past, one of the things that we did with summer school is, we tracked the summer school students into first quarter and then looked at if they maintained or went up at all, and that really gave us more data in terms of how effective summer school was, just as a thought.
Correct. And so last year, I believe, we had the data, those that attended, those that were recommended, and those, so those that are recommended and attended versus those that were recommended and did not attend, and their false star scores, so we can certainly provide that data as well.
Absolutely. I'd like to see that, and I'm glad you talked about consistency of curriculum, because that's really important over the summer, and one of the questions I had with math and Read 180 is training, because that's a program that requires consistency of instruction. And I was glad to see that you have some training, because are those experienced teachers delivering that intervention?
We actually bring in the company to train them.
Okay, perfect.
And both of those products, those vendors now have a specified program for summer school, so that kids who are in that program during the school year are not repeating what's going on in the summer.
That was going to be my other question.
Yeah, and it's very specific to the summer, and they've adjusted the whole way that the program works to accommodate a summer schedule.
And I'd like to see some data collected on that, too, like pre and post for the summer.
Yeah, we find that our kids do not slide as much when they're in that program.
Thanks.
You took half of my question, so I think that'd be very, very insightful to learn the kids who attend the summer school, how do they do the next semester, but I'm going to ask the awkward question here, which is, I know June is not August, but what is the age of the air conditioning in those seven buildings? And that wasn't a joke. I mean, we, you know, do we have a problem in June, or haven't we had a problem in June?
I'm not going to pretend to be a meteorologist, but it tends to be warmer in August than in June. This will probably shock this entire community. I actually don't have that committed to memory in terms of the age of the HVAC systems. I can see the bar graph in my head, but I just...
Let the record show, I stumped the superintendent. Took me six months, but...
No, no, so it'll absolutely be a consideration. Even the capacity, like the number of classrooms and spaces that are used in the summer looks different than it does over the course of the school.
I guess what I was a little more concerned about, to be completely blunt, is if any of those... is if any of those schools are on the schedule that they need to be the first up to get replaced, if we haven't factored that into where we put them, do we need to look at that before we publish this?
It's a great question. So I will tell you that the initial Summer Academy meeting that I have starts with facilities. Um, so Chris Friend is the first one that I invite when I invite, because it's his team that really dictates, um, what the summer school sites look like, and so he brings that knowledge with us, um, so we can then talk about the dates, but he really dictate, helps us to determine what schools are best suited for summer school.
Yeah, that's fantastic, because I, what I really didn't want is, you know, the announcement of, okay, we got the prop free money, okay, oh gee, we're gonna go to Rockwood Summit, oh, wait a minute.
Yeah.
We can't close that down, we already scheduled school there.
We've turned down a lot of sites, um, being a host site due to, um, so, for upgrades for facilities, et cetera, so that's, that's something we want.
Perfect, thank you.
I can tell you Babler is good. I'm a parent there. I do have a question. Now, do you think the numbers had gone up due to COVID? And I know, I know summer school, you know, that you all do an amazing job, and I visited with you last year.
I, I don't.
What numbers?
The student attendance?
Attendance, yeah. I understand the high school, you know, get in credits.
It was very high the year we were in COVID, because we offered it, we opened the door to everybody, it wasn't a recommendation kind of setup. And then the last two years, we've dropped a little bit, but we have not dropped below where we were pre-COVID. So, um, I look every year to kind of see where we are. We're always right around that 700 mark. In the last couple of summers, I think a lot of families were taking vacations that maybe hadn't taken it since COVID. Um, at least that's conversations I had on the phone. So I would think it would continue to peak back up again. That's the trend we were having before COVID.
Okay.
That's my, that would be my prediction, but.
Okay, thank you.
So I had a question about, um, credit recovery courses for the high school students. So I know they have a variety of needs, you know, one student needs a credit, you know, in this class, so how do you address, you know, which classes you offer?
So we offer the majority of the core classes that kids would need, and then we always check in with the counselors and look at where our Fs are, so that if there is a specific need, we can offer that. So in the past, we've had their requests, they've requested some senior English classes that we weren't necessarily offering. We'll check in with them again and see if there's a need somewhere to add something, but we usually can accommodate most of what kids need.
Thank you.
Just wanna, just tap on or add on to your comment, um, Director Emig. Their underselling is how much work it took and thought and creativity to have this end before July actually began. That is gonna be a tremendous value add, not only for staffing, but in terms of impact for, for families as well. So, um, that is likely to have a positive, um, impact for overall participation in summer school program. Sorry, that's a question.
Can you, um, can you just share what a day would look like for a second grader, since it's not an A and a B? Can you just give us a snapshot of what it would look like?
I, I can do my best, um, to tell you. I will say that the teachers this year, it was a difference for them. Many of them have taught four years. Um, and so knowing that they were getting kids into those classrooms that were not specifically there for reading or specifically there for math, but they were specifically there for need, um, required a little bit more of them of getting to know those kids as quickly as possible. But what we found is kids who need, a lot of times just need. And so they were not at all, um, missing out on something by getting some reading and some math while they were there. So our teachers did the best they could to get to know them, and we asked our current teachers to provide some input so that we could hit the ground running, and they took that information, and then they decided, um, how to group their kids, whether or not, um, they were going to divide up with their teammate and one of them teach reading and one of them teach math, and somebody was going to get exactly what they needed, or whether they were both gonna teach both, because that's what most of their students needed. Um, kiddos walk in in the morning, if they need breakfast, they can go get breakfast, and then they go to their classroom. Um, the teachers team up to work together as far as exchanging kids if they need to. They usually take a midday break, um, and allow for a snack, and maybe if the temperature's not ridiculous, they can get outside a little bit or use the gym. Um, Adventure Club moving out of our sites a few years ago into their own buildings allowed for that gymnasium to be an option, especially in the summer, which was a great benefit. And then, um, right around 11:50, they go to lunch if they want to grab lunch or need a lunch before they leave. Most of our county kids do not take part in that, because they're gonna go home to lunch, and then they get on a bus or in their car and head home. Some of them go to Adventure Club, we do have busing to Adventure Club sites. Um, some of them stay at that site for a Community Ed course also.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
What is the typical student-teacher ratio? And our, do you have any idea about that?
During the school year, is the class size guidelines that we use. So some of those are right at that number, and, um, other classes, because attendance is a little different in the summer, um, we're in competition with swim team and Six Flags and sleepovers and all that good stuff, but, um, we'll have some class sizes that get down to about 15 to 1.
Okay.
Um, and then we have the classroom assistants too, so that would throw the ratio on paper off a little.
Thank you.
Have we ever considered offering cadet teaching during summer school as a credit option for extra hands? I don't know, it just is an idea that just popped in my head.
I've never had students come as a, as for a credit. But we have had, um, A-plus volunteers, and then we have the, the kids come in. Oh, yeah, the project interface students come in. And when I talked earlier about the benefits for students, there is a great benefit for teachers too, and I know those kids who are struggling deserve a, a highly qualified, experienced teacher, but it is also a really good place to figure out whether you're a highly qualified, experienced teacher, and for us to grow you into one before you get boots on the ground in August. And so we have had lots of success with teachers that were student teaching and have their certificate already and are getting ready to go into a classroom. Teachers that are, already know they have a job in August, and they want to teach in the summer and get their feet wet. And we've had some classroom assistants who have their teaching certificate, teachers in the summer, and then decide the classrooms where they need to be full-time. So that comes out. Be a positive too.
I might suggest one of the things we did in Webster Groves last summer was, we worked with nine pre-service teachers from Webster University that were getting certified, and they already have their substitute certification. And so that's another source where, and they got their feet wet with what it's like to teach small groups. So when you're looking some, from, for some of those small group paras, those, that's another source to go to.
You show a lot of passion, Angie, and for summertime, that's amazing, so thank you, because I know it's a lot of work.
I love it, yeah. You guys cannot come visit.
I did visit you, and I think it was the 2020 year, right, when it was open for everybody, and I remember going through that car line, because I was like, Josie, this is gonna be awesome, we're gonna go pick up all this cool stuff. Going through that car line, holy cow, well-oiled machine, and that was obviously an exception to what you were used to in any realm, so you've. Probably, I think it was, yes, it was, yes.
Don't come drop off or pick up. They believe you are a rock star. They're so pleased to see adults in their space. The doors are open for that, so please come to them, come see them in the classroom.
That's awesome, keep up the great work. Thank you for everything you all are doing. All right, next up is just the, um, proposed agenda for the December 7th meeting, which is at Rockwood Summit, and it is a board awards, um, night, so there's a motion attached to this, which is not typically there, because for board awards nights, we, uh, generally change our agenda and abbreviate it a bit so that we can spend the time and energy in that evening honoring our guests who are award recipients. So, um, I will read the motion.